The quorum, the closed session is canceled. There will still be the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. So it is now still 5:30, it's 5:31 at the moment, so the meeting is recessed until 7:00 PM.
Hello, I'd like to welcome you all, and I'd like to call the meeting to order for the October 9th regular meeting for the City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Council members Muldoon and Pieter have excused absences.
All right, we will now have the invocation from Councilmember O'Neill, and I'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, please grant us wisdom and guidance. Please bless us with peace, love, and charity. Please watch over those who watch over us, and we thank you for the blessings in our lives. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
All right, please put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, we'll now have a presentation for, to our Code Enforcer Enforcement Officers' Appreciation Week. But before we start, we have to now, we're in the, how do I explain this? A trial court in San Diego has it that we may have to require this, and so this is going to offer more transparency on how you're going to work with this, but I will now open the public comments to this presentation that you haven't heard yet. I know, but I have to do that, so would there, are there any people would like to come up and talk about something they don't know anything about? I'm sorry, about the Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. Seeing none. Oh, so please do, good. Thank you. Sorry.
This is Denise Oberman. I'm a resident, and I have had experience with the code enforcement staff. I have not reviewed or seen the presentation, so I'm just going to make a comment that I'm initiating vis-à-vis that department and its members or its staff. I've noticed that they've been extremely professional and responsive, and I know that when the current leadership started, there was an intense cultural resistance on the part of the council to the whole notion of regulating behavior and regulating actions. They were all convinced we were going to be in a non-us state if we had any regulations. So I'd like to commend Matt Cozyline and all the members of that staff for the responsive and professional staff that I've seen them do to date in terms of their performance, and I'm confident they'll continue. Thank you.
Well said. Thanks for coming up and saying that. Anyone else? Seeing none? All right, we'll move ahead. I could go ahead and read this, or would any of the staff like to?
I wasn't sure, is there an actual proclamation?
Yes.
Then, the way it's done now is that you actually have to vote on the proclamation. So, if you guys want to vote on it, then may read it.
I move the proclamation be read and given to our, by the way, just real quick, folks, it's just unclear exactly what the rules are at the moment, because there's a trial court ruling down in San Diego that, questionable to say nicely. And so the question on the table is really going to be how much we want to make sure. They're still trying to work out the rules down, and it didn't deal with the city of Newport Beach, it dealt with the city of San Diego. But the cities up and down the state are trying to figure out what it means. We're just going to do this out of an abundance of caution, so anyway, I move the proclamation be read and given to our.
I second.
All right, let's vote.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
All right, Mayor Protem, thank you for trying to explain that. Okay, all right, so, whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, and whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety, health, and welfare of citizens in the city of Newport Beach through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety, and whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving quality of life for residents and businesses of local communities, and whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the city of Newport Beach and regularly interact with public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as code enforcement officers, I now therefore, I, Marshall Duffy Duffield, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council hereby proclaim the second week of October 2018 and annually thereafter to be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Newport Beach.
We do have some of our code enforcement staff here, and if I could just have our director maybe say a few words and mention who's here, and we can do the proclamation with a picture, that'd be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. This is really great. This is a wonderful opportunity to recognize our code enforcement officers. I'm going to ask them to all stand up over there. Matt and Brian, if please stand. There you go. What we got? And, Mr. Mayor, if we could have a photograph, that'd be wonderful. While the mayor's walking down, we want to recognize that we have kind of two teams here. We have the City Hall team and our Harbor Department team on the code enforcement side, so all of them are here today. Thank you, gentlemen. Go ahead and join the mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right, we're going to now have City Council announcements, and before we do, we're going to open it up to public comment.
Actually, it probably makes sense to open a public comment after the announcement.
That would.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. Okay, so, not yet, we're going to...
Yeah, there's just going to be City Council announcements, and then you'll have a right to comment on the announcements that they make.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. First item is Mayor Protem O'Neill and I are both involved with mentoring programs, and I just wanted to give a shout out to my mentee, Landon, in the back there. Landon, put your hand up there, you go. And he's a junior at Harbor High. This is his chance to pitch the mentor program, and I know Mayor Protem O'Neill agrees completely is that it's not a one-way street. I learn as much from my mentees over the years as I, hopefully, they learn from me. But the main thing is just spending some time together and getting to know each other and really making a new friend, and Landon and I are off to a great start. We spent some time on my boat last weekend. I think I had him in the engine room getting ready to do an oil change or something, something some guys could talk about, you know, over the, over the day. But it's really a great program, and it just makes our community more connected in the way I think that we can all appreciate, bringing youth and adults of a certain age together. So it's amazing, and if you've ever had an interest in it, I highly recommend doing it. Thank you. Next, I have something that I just wanted to recognize, someone up here on the dais, our mayor, for something that he has done a couple of years ago, but I don't think ever really got the recognition for it. Regular harbor users know there are public docks around the harbor and that these docks have a unique feature. They have decorative finials on them, and each of our 11 docks has two finials each on pilings, and originally, nobody kind of knows where they came from, but the idea was, we think, that they were installed, obviously, to help boaters and the public identify public piers and floats. With so many piers and floats along Newport's waterfront, public floats tend to blend in with private docks, and so you can wind up on a private dock or vice versa. So, in 1940, I was talking with Seymour Beek, and he said about 1940, as a kid, he remembers seeing the finials installed on the harbor. In those days, they were wood, and so this photo you see here is from that time period, probably a little later. But, so Seymour remembers them being installed, and they went around and they were very good for figuring out you were at a public dock. It worked not only for boaters, but people on the shore side as you're walking along, you know, because quite often, a home pier out to the float would, can be right next to a public pier, so it really helped identify those beyond just the signage. So the distinctive design could have come from Italy. I think we've got a slide of some, and they're not quite like that, but there's a, there's a look that's similar, and no one knows for sure, but the originals were made of wood, and they're about 30 inches high, and about 18 years ago, when the Harbor Commission was relatively new, the Commission worked with the Harbor Resources Department to replace the finials, which were rotted out or were missing altogether. And then, they were replaced, and then just about five years ago, those finials that were replaced apparently weren't built that well, and they were falling apart, and so they needed to be replaced again. And our mayor, a former Harbor Commission, offered to build 22 new finials, because he happens to be in that business, fiberglass construction, and he came up with a different design that would withstand the test of time and the elements, and replaced all the finials over a period of years, and he might correct me on some of these things, because I haven't really talked to them about it. But last spring, the last finial was installed, and bringing them all to 22. So, I did do a little checking and talking with Chris Miller, our Harbor Resources manager, and the city beforehand had a contract of about $800 per finial to replace all 22, not including the installation, which our mayor did. And, so I just think it's important that we enter into the record that Mayor Duffield has made this gift to the city and on his own initiative, and for the record, the mayor did not put me up to this announcement, and I know it's an election year, but it just kind of came into my consciousness, and I felt compelled to, to recognize this contribution to our harbor and to our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was hoping that wouldn't happen, but okay, thanks for that. Mrs. Dixon.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and they are beautiful. Thank you for your generous gift. I have a number of announcements, so let me begin. Want to salute our generous community. Last weekend, they, Sunday, last Sunday, locals rolled up their sleeves and came out in full force during the fifth annual Dory Deli Beach Cleanup from 9:00 AM to 12:00, all for a great cause, and they met at Tower 22 near the Newport Pier for coffee, hot cocoa, bags, and gloves, and then hit the beach. And thanks to Mario Rovick of Malarky's fame and owner of Dory Deli, who he organizes this, he and his team organize this every year, the volunteers successfully cleaned up 225 pounds of trash at Black Hills Beach, and one of the best, not only do we have cleaner beaches momentarily anyway, but it's the partnerships with local schools, including Newport L., Newport Heights Elementary, Newport Harbor High, and local nonprofits, including Surf Rider Newport Beach, the Ben Carlson Memorial Foundation, Drains to the Ocean, and Save Our Youth, and the Board Club. So it's really an all-community, broad and deep and wide effort to keep our beaches clean, and I'm very grateful, so I wanted to recognize that noble effort by our community. I know others will probably be talking about the Newport Foundation holding their conference on bullying, so I'll skip over that. I attended that briefly, it was just really amazing. I had to be somewhere else during the same period of time, which was a very worthwhile event. I went over to Enson Middle School to celebrate our exchange students from Okasaki, Japan, the 34th year of this sister city exchange program. The Sister City Association of Newport Beach organizes this, it's been going on 34 years. It's amazing students, so the Japanese students come over here and stay with families, and the Enson children go over to Japan and stay with families, and as I understand it, families have been staying in contact with their respective families here and in Japan for decades. It's just really a wonderful opportunity for cultural exchange and for children of that age just to open up their eyes to the glories of the world and world relations. So I just want to acknowledge the Sister City Association. Tomorrow, down at the Balboa Pier, I mentioned at the last meeting, we are launching the clever buoy shark, what do I say, shark attack prevention system, and we have, the pilot project is launching officially tomorrow, and we've alerted the media, so that will be held at the Balboa Pier right adjacent to the Junior Lifeguard trailer, and Smart Marine Systems is an Australian company is starting a two-month pilot project to demonstrate and test its technologically advanced marine monitoring system off the coast of Newport Beach near Balboa Pier. It's at 11:00 AM tomorrow at Balboa Pier, and Tara, the public's invited, correct? Yeah, the public is invited, so please join us at the base of the pier for brief introductions and an overview. This is really, if this works, new to the world, new technology, well, existing sonar technology that has been designed to identify specifically sharks, not any other mammal or fish or any sharks. This will really be game, a game changer for shark prevention. So this is a pilot program, no cost to the city. This company is donating it to prove its efficacy, so it's really going to be interesting to see the outcome. The way it works is that if a shark enters into this sonar radius, then the lifeguards will have the, on their phone, the alarm, instant alarm to the lifeguards, that they would be able to clear the beaches and get everybody out of the waters. So this is going to be an interesting experiment. And last, but definitely not least, we have some exciting news to share with our community, and this will be a two-part presentation. Mr. Hurdman will take some of this as well. We've talked a lot about our trips to Washington, John Wayne Airport, noise, health, flight paths. Well, our government works. This is great to tell you, in Washington, amazingly, that the FAA reauthorization bill has been signed by the President, passed both houses and signed. This is all in the last week since Mr. Hurdman, no, Mr. Muldoon and I were in Washington. So Congress has approved, and the President signed, the five-year FAA reauthorization bill, and as many of you know and those listening, we have been tracking and engaging with Congress on this legislation since early this year. And to that end, Mr. Muldoon, Mr. Hurdman, and I have gone to Washington a couple of times and met with not only our own California delegation, but important leaders in Congress on the House and Senate on the aviation and transportation sides, and we were listened to, and we advocated for the positions for, and this is first, this has never been done in an FAA bill, to recognize that, to study noise and health-related impacts of airplanes, and these efforts were effective. The bill is 460 pages plus a host of provisions. Mr. Hurdman will give you more specific, but noise and health-related impacts are included in this bill. I've spoken before about what we're working on. We've got some short-term issues we're working directly with the carriers on. This is more long-term, obviously, to do longitudinal studies on the health impacts, but it is really significant, and I'm very proud of our city and the staff and our former city manager and our current city manager who's hit the ground running on airport issues and the community that's deeply and heavily and daily engaged on John Wayne issues. There is passion here that is not going to stop, and I'm very proud to be part of it. And I wanted to make one other final announcement. I mentioned Mr. Muldoon's name. I just wanted to publicly announce that Mr. Muldoon is with his wife at Hope Hospital, awaiting the birth of their little boy. She's been in labor all day today, so he is not here tonight, and he wanted the community to know. So he has a legitimate, well, they're all legitimate, he has an excused absence, and we wish Heather and Kevin great success in welcoming their little son into the world today, the miracle of life. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, I'll continue on with FAA, some more, get a little more specific, so you can see why we're really encouraged by the passage of this legislation. The new law contains several provisions regarding overhead noise. Actually, this is particularly encouraging, because I know on our first trip to Washington, DC, the FAA basically told us to go home, work with our local airport, work with our local air carriers. This new FAA reauthorization bill will require considerable participation by the FAA in terms of studies, for example, phasing out of stage-three aircraft, establish regional public liaisons, tasked with working with communities specifically on aircraft noise and pollution. We're going to have a specific person in an office that we'll be able to work with, contact on JWA issues. Another provision is to require the FAA to work with airports and affected communities who have noise concerns. Very specific, they have to work with us. Require the FAA to study health and economic impacts of noise exposure, look at sleep disturbance and elevated blood pressure. The SoCal, or the Southern California Metroplex, which we are currently living under now, is an area that must, in its underlying, be studied. So the FAA cannot tell us to go home anymore. Another provision require the FAA to develop a plan to engage with impacted communities in response to next-gen flight assignments. Require the FAA to evaluate aircraft takeoff speeds and correlated noise. We've done that work for them, haven't we? We have, yes, and it is being given, pretty much in the hands of the air carriers now. And then authorize six pilot programs to evaluate environmental mitigation projects that will measurably reduce or mitigate aviation impacts on noise, air quality, water quality within five miles of the airport. The definition of that is a little foggy right now, as a bird flies. We're not quite sure if the peninsula and the Balboa Islands are included in that five-mile radius, but as a bird flies, hopefully, they will be, so that has yet to be determined.
We'll do it in nautical miles.
Nautical miles, there you go. Okay, just a few other announcements. I had the privilege of being able to tour the Salvation Army headquarters out in, at Tustin Ranch. It was just an amazing morning. I had absolutely no idea the magnitude of this organization and the services that they provide, and the fact that they are faith-based, the Salvation Army is completely faith-based, was very impressive to me. Community groups, myself, Councilwoman Dixon, Councilman Muldoon, and our staff, our outstanding staff, continue to hold regular meetings on a weekly basis regarding the subject of John Wayne Airport. I just want you to know that we're hard at work, we're addressing the issues of noise and pollution. Another announcement is to compliment the newly resurrected Newport Beach Foundation. This week, this past week, they sponsored an event here at City Hall on school violence and bullying. They brought together Lauren Kleiman and Joe Stapleton, who are on the board, brought together key professionals from surrounding school districts and private schools, just to talk about violence and bullying in our schools. And then in the evening, parents were encouraged to attend, and they were brought together to hear from the expert on the same subject. So I'm very pleased that this foundation is up and running again, and that this, this is the intent of their, their existence, to educate the community about really key subjects and topics. Several of us attended the Newport Mesa Unified School District State of the Schools Breakfast this year. It was just held late last week, very entertaining and informative morning. And then, over the weekend, the Newport Beach Fire Department went all out for the Fire Service Day Open House at the Santa Ana Heights Station. I just want to compliment them, and boy, was it well-attended. And I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys for such a great job on the airport. Well, well done. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Sure, so we have a couple slides that I've been asked to speak a little bit about. The Oasis Senior Center will be holding its annual Health and Resources Fair on Saturday, October 20th, from 9:00 AM until noon. This fair is an opportunity for Newport Beach seniors and their families to learn about available resources. There's a free breakfast, raffle prizes, over 70 vendors, educational lectures and class demonstrations. The event, excuse me, the event is free and open to the public. Oasis is located at 801 Narcissus Avenue in Corona del Mar. This event is coordinated by the city's Recreation and Senior Services Department. The Recreation and Senior Services Department's After-Class Enrichment Program is known as ACE. Fall programs are in full swing with classes at Mariners, Newport Heights, Newport Coast, and Newport Elementary School, Schools. ACE provides recreational after-school opportunities to over 2,200 kids each year. STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, and sports-based classes are held on campus following regular class dismissal. For more information and to register your child, visit the city's website, which you see on the screen, at newportbeachca.gov/ACE. The Recreation and Senior Services Department has put together a video about the ACE program, which features Newport Beach resident and ACE regular, six-year-old Eddie McGill.
Love you, Eddie.
Thanks.
All right, that's awesome. Okay, so Laura, we need one of those post-City Council meetings, too. Okay, so Laura, we need one of those post-city council meetings, too. So, I'm going to run through some of these because they've already been mentioned. The Newport Mesa Unified School District State of the Schools was fantastic. Thank you to the trustees for inviting us. The Newport Beach Foundation Roundtable that was held discussing bullying was fantastic. Councilmember Hurdman and I were there, and then later that evening, my wife went, which was, she really enjoyed that as well. Supervisor Michelle Steele hosted an Orange County Public Safety Forum just across the way. It was attended by about 100 people. John Lewis from our police department was there to speak. I was, I was there as well. We had a representative from the sheriff and a couple representatives from the county to discuss engineering and homelessness, which was very well-received. And then, the fire department's open house was phenomenal. My kid's got more stickers, so thank you, Chief, for the more stickers that we've got in our house now. And then the CDM Sandcastle Contest, if you've seen those pictures, that was incredible. You've got to go see them in person if you haven't seen that before. And then we've got a finance committee meeting on Thursday, the 18th. Come on out. And on top of that, we just found out that Moody's has rated our city AAA-rated yet again, so we'll keep that going. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I was not here last time because I was in Antibes, France, which is our sister city, and I was able to find the city hall, which is not easy when you can't read the street signs. But we found them, I gave them a little present, and they have been around for hundreds of years and do quite well in a building much smaller than this, but that's another story. They were wonderful and you went there as well.
I was there the 25th anniversary.
Twenty-five years, so that was, that was something. I was blown away. And that Eddie, Eddie kid on that video, that kid's going places. And also, Brad, I didn't mean to sound like I'm not appreciative of what you did, but it was not planned and I, yeah, I didn't say, I didn't say thank you, so, thank you. All right. Moving on. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull.
Hold on a second. We still need to take public comment on that, on the item. I know, it's a new, it's a new requirement, but I'd open it up to public comment.
Public comments on public comments?
Public comments on council announcements.
Yeah, so this would be an opportunity.
That's right, that's right.
For anyone to come up and make a comment on the announcements that were made.
Clarification, please. Isn't this also the time we request future agenda items? Okay.
No.
It's not on the agenda otherwise.
Oh, I see. Yes, sorry, yeah.
I'd like to comment on the meeting that was held on public safety over here at the meeting room next door, and I thought it was very interesting since homelessness and crime were discussed. Am I, is this the wrong time?
I'm confused, sorry.
I thought we could speak on what you guys commented on.
Yeah, I mentioned this particular item, so go ahead.
Did I do that wrong?
You're right, you're right. I'm wrong.
This is new, sorry.
Well, anyway, what I thought was really interesting is the sheriff's department said that 83% now, 83%, it used to be much lower, of the people that have come out of the Riverdale that have been dispersed around Orange County are from, they're either parolees or out-of-rehab homes, 83%. And then I thought it was interesting that in the presentation, they never mentioned rehab houses until the very end because someone asked a question on, and it was actually me, because I'm always asking questions about rehab houses. And when you go to vote this time around, think about the money that has been brought into this county by rehab operators. It's not working, we just had two overdoses in Costa Mesa by kids in a public storage locker. They'd been thrown out of rehab houses. They got rented somehow, a public storage unit. I mean, there are so many overdoses in this county. There are so many robberies, there's so much going on because people are being curbed by rehab houses. I'm begging you, when you go to vote, don't vote for anyone who has taken money from people involved with sober living money. It's dirty, it's dark, it's hidden, it's hard to find, but it's there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any others would like to speak about the announcements?
My name is George Hillcomer with the Newport Board Association. I have a simple question. I have attachments A and B from your agenda items on your city council.
So, this is an opportunity to speak about the council members' announcements that they made. There will be an opportunity later on to speak about agenda items, sir.
Really quick question. Attachment B is a markup. Is attachment A the unmarked of that? That's it.
I'll come over and answer your question if you want, just meet me on the side here.
All right, here we go. So, any others? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Now is the time to, for, in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through six. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, thank you. Council, are there any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. Avery.
I have none.
Thank you. Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, Mayor, I have one clarification on item three, and I'd like to pull item six. If I may ask, the city manager.
Actually, real quick, Councilmember Duffield has a conflict on item three. I don't know if you want to pull the item.
Well, all right, I guess I'll make it simpler. All right, I'll pull two and six, please.
Number three.
Three and six, council member.
Excuse me, I can't read my own writing. Three and six, yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
I was going to ask if six be pulled, but that was just done.
And Mayor Protem O'Neill.
I'll lodge a recusal on five and note that staff has requested that item four be continued due to an error being found in the coastal commission approval letter that will need to be corrected first, so I'll note a staff continuance on four.
All right, thank you, and I will be recusing myself on item three and six of the consent calendar. Should I now do item seven as well? Mr. Harp?
Just briefly, Councilmember O'Neill, I didn't quite hear if you announced the reason for your conflict on number five.
Due to it being close enough to my house.
Okay, so that'll be based on residential property. And then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Duffield, or Mayor Duffield, what did you ask?
So, would you like me to recuse on all three items, which one is for the regular meeting, but?
So, actually, since the, they've been removed from the consent calendar, you can just announce your specific conflict when they get to those items. So I think you're ready to go ahead and vote at this point after you get public comment.
Yeah, hang on, I just need to make a motion. So I move the balance of the consent calendar with item three and six being pulled by Councilmember Dixon, number four being continued by staff, and number five showing a recusal by me.
A second.
All right, we'll go to public comments on the consent calendar. Are there any folks that would like to come up and talk about any item on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none. Oh, sorry.
Richard Dorn, retired police officer, longtime businessman, currently contractor to Homeland Security FEMA. On 2018-17, some of this was in the previous ordinance and some of it is the changes.
So, that item was actually pulled, they'll be considering it separately, so if you want, just hold on for just a minute, they're going to get to it.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's coming right back in just a minute.
Very difficult to hear what they're saying.
Yeah.
Towards the back, a little volume would help.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
All right, so we will now hear from, on items three and six, from Dixon, I will.
We need to vote.
I'd like to vote.
Oh.
Prior to, oh, yes. Councilmember Avery, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay. So, item three has been polled with the mayor showing a conflict, so it was polled by Councilmember Dixon, and we'll just wait just a moment.
And just briefly, Councilmember Duffield is recusing himself based on advice from the FPPC related to regulations of the harbor and given his interest and his business interest and source of income.
Okay. Councilmember Dixon, would you like a staff report?
No, I just have, thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to just ask our city manager to explain, there was some, I don't think the staff report directly answered or spoke to the, both of these positions that are being reclassified. If you could just clarify what we are doing tonight, please.
Yes, I'll have Assistant City Manager Carol Jacobs just very briefly go through the two position reclassifications.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon and Council, there are two staffing proposed changes. The first is the current Harbor Resource Manager position. The incumbent would be reclassified to Administrative Manager position. The Administrative Manager position is compensated at less than the Harbor Resources Manager. So what we would do for that position, we would call as Y-rating it. So, the incumbent's salary would remain where it is now, which is higher than where they would be reclassified to. So the Harbor Resources Manager is a higher-paid position than the Administrative Manager. So that position, that person would no longer have the ability to get raises until such time as the Administrative Manager position, through salary increases and negotiations, that salary would raise, and then at that point, they would be eligible again for additional raises and compensation. The second position is the Harbor Resources Technician, and we're recommending that that be reclassified to a permit technician. Permit technician is a little broader-ranged skillset, and so this person would be, would be the opposite of that. This, the permit technician, I guess we have to stop.
You can, you can go on.
Any other questions? The permit technician position, the incumbent would then be placed into that classification and they would get normal salary increases as their skillset increases to that level, and that would be included in next year's budget. There was no mention of financial impact because there is none.
Well, thank you for that clarification. I was not familiar with the term Y-class, I guess.
Y-rating.
Y-rating, so that's really where I was on that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the dice? All right, seeing none, we'll go out to public. Is there any public on, comment on item number three?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Tim Stokes. I have a concern over this issue. I received on my doorstep a, a door knocker about the mayor. I saw he was recused today, so I need to ask the city attorney what, which is true. Is Mayor Duffy creating the Harbor Department or is he doing, is he following the letter of his FPPC actions? Which is true.
Mr. Stokes, this is not the time to ask questions of staff from the public comments section, if that's your purpose.
All right. I think the residents need to know that, though.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem O'Neill and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Even if this had not been polled, I had a comment to make about the ordinance part of this. It's making extensive revisions to Title 17 of our municipal code, the Harbor Code, to reflect the staffing changes that we just heard about. In addition, it's changing the definition of the Harbor Master from being a county employee to being a city employee, and it's reassigning the duties of the former Harbor Resources Manager either to the Public Works Director or to the, to the new city Harbor Master. So, the agenda says that this item is about staffing changes, but if you actually go through the Red Line Ordinance, as I pointed out in writing, there are five changes to Title 17, the Harbor Code, that have nothing at all to do with staffing changes. And while you are considering this, I believe you have asked the Harbor Commission, as one of their goals this year, to comprehensively review the entire Title 17, the Harbor Code. So I would suggest that you confine this ordinance to just being the things that have to do with the staffing changes. Those other five revisions have not been, that they've been slipped in without any public review, comment, or knowledge, and I think it would be good to defer those five things to the Harbor Commission's comprehensive review and just enact tonight or introduce the changes that have to do with the staffing. The other ones are unrelated, as far as I can tell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Title 17 is a big deal of mine because, as Mr. Mosher said, stuff gets slid in without any public comment.
Excuse me if you could, thank you. Much better.
Things get slid in. I'm Susan Riddle, and given that you are in the process of amending the Harbor Code, now is the appropriate time to address a serious issue. I'm requesting that the city council revert back to the original language of the Harbor Code as it existed prior to December 2013 amendments. Charges to the Harbor Code need to be made carefully and not as special legislation for the benefit of one person to the detriment of others. It is patently unfair and against the values of this city to favor one citizen over another. The city council amended the Harbor Code to benefit John Vallally. This was confirmed in a letter dated August 15th, 2013, from Harry Carmack, Vallally's attorney, to the city council. I just provided a copy of the letter to you. The Carmack letter affirmatively states, "It is my understanding these proposed amendments come from the city attorney's office and have been made under discussion for some time. However, it is probably, probably fair to say the Vallally Dock situation may have prompted the city attorney's office to propose the amendments at this time." Mr. Carmack is admitting that the Harbor Code is being changed solely for Mr. Vallally. I am here to ask you to go back to the Harbor Municipal Codes prior to December 2013 revision regarding pier encroachments, keeping in mind how it affects the surrounding homeowners. The current code regarding setback states, "With prior approval of the city, piers and slips for commercial property may extend past the prolongation of the property line." It also eliminated the notice to abutting upland property involvement. Why would you secret an action that would be to the detriment of an abutting upland owner? Did you understand that this change would substantially affect me and my property interest? Was this done so that you could enter into a secret settlement agreement without notifying me? Prior to December 2013, while being sued by John Vallally, the code required notice to abutting upland property owners and also said, "All pier slips for commercial properties may extend, but not past, the prolongation of the property line." This ordinance changing the ability to encroach was introduced on the consent calendar in November 2013. The council accepted the ordinance without public presentation or any discussion. According to the staff report, the changes to ordinance 2013-27 were put into place under the direction of the council during November 12 study session. However, it appears that the November 12 study discussion was exclusively about the computation of the dock fee, the characterization of docks owned by homeowners associations, and transfers of residential permits. The proposed ordinance, which allowed encroachment for one person only, John Vallally, had appeared out of the blue. In 2008, the entire municipal code was thoroughly vetted. On May 14th, 2013, an ordinance was introduced. Well, you have everything there, but I just want to say, I urge you to change back the Harbor Code 17.35.020 to what it stated before the amendment. I urge you to review the use that Mr. Vallally is now utilizing for his dock that either places restrictions or do an environmental study to address the impact of his whale-watching business, and there's all sorts of interesting facts on how many people, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people flood our streets every week.
Thank you, Ms. Riddle. Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, we'll pull it back to the dice. So I'll just note for everyone, if you would like... So I'll just note for everyone, if you would like to read it, of course, it's always part of the, the ordinance changes are of course part of the packet. Did you have a public comment on this item, sir? Okay, come on forward. Do we have any other speakers on this? I just, okay, why don't you come on forward as well so I don't miss you? Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Some provisions in this ordinance are not realistic as they stand. The 040C tampering with lines at the dinghy docks, it's impossible to use the dinghy dock as they're configured without tampering with lines. There are frequently three, four, sometimes five dinghies tied to the same cleat. So it's impossible to use that dock without addressing other people's lines. Regarding the unoccupied vessels as being abandoned, three hours during the daylight if you're not on the boat, which would apply to the anchorage, which seems like a very short timeframe for someone to get from their vessel, which are usually cruising people, get a bus, go to a grocery store, or take care of business and get back in three hours. As far as zero hours at nighttime, people sometimes like to go have dinner. It's dark at five o'clock. It would prohibit anybody from leaving their boat to go have dinner. As far as making another vessel fast to your vessel, it addresses our dinghies in another section, but this section would prohibit you from having a guest over to tie their tender alongside your boat. There should be provisions made for, for guests, for everyone, because people using their boats just on a weekend would have guests coming over. A liveaboard requirement of being, living aboard in harbor for eight months in order to maintain your permit is totally unrealistic. Many people with liveaboars go cruising, frequently spend six months in Mexico. Sometimes they travel to other places. Being a contractor with FEMA, I'm frequently gone for four to six, last year, six and a half months I was away from my boat. I was totally my residence, it's my only residence, I have no place else to live. Several places in this item, it refers to permit fees and for rent. Initially was a permit fee that we're paying. We're still paying a permit fee. We're not paying rent for a mooring. We own the mooring. We're paying a fee to have the permit. All of the mooring equipment belongs to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to the liveaboard permit concerns that were raised, in section 40 of this amendment with regards to liveaboard permits, it also says that in the event that the harbor master thereby make, there may be, if the harbor master thinks that there may be grounds for suspicion or revocation of a permit issued, and then it goes on and it says, "That person will receive a 15 calendar day notice from the harbor master." And I'm asking if anybody on land will get 15 days to, to, that their home will be taken away from them. So basically, I'm asking that the city will revisit the lopsidedness with regards to how liveaboars are being treated in the harbor, being put on such a short leash and yet have to comply to the similar, to codes and have to jump through many hoops to be in compliance. And yet, if there's a mistake and somebody is traveling and they are out of the state or whatever, they get 15 days to, to respond and to find a, to get a hearing or they will be evicted from their home. Furthermore, I'm requesting that the sheriffs get involved with evicting somebody from a liveaboard situation with a proper serving, service process, because these, this is their only home, they have no other place to go. And so if somebody gets thrown out of their home in 15 days, I think this, the city needs to rethink how liveaboars are being treated and how this, the whole framework of this section 40 is being established.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seen none, we'll pull it back. So just to clarify for everyone, if you have a, if you take a look in the agenda packet starting on page 42, 3-42 through 3-72, it'll show you the red line of what we're proposing, modifying tonight. Much of what's been discussed in terms of concerns about the framework of, of the ordinance is not actually being modified tonight. That's, that's not the purpose. It's almost entirely the purpose to clean up the language dealing with the harbor resources manager versus the harbor master. So take a look at the red line. But I will note, one of the speakers was correct to note that the harbor commission will be looking at a rather extensive chapter seven, Title 17 review, revision, and oversight. We have Harbor Commissioner Paul Blank here tonight who is going to be part of that process. And so if you have concerns about anything of substance in our ordinance, particularly in Title 17, by all means, voice them to the city council, voice them to the harbor commission, because the harbor commission will be going through and vetting a substantial amount of, of the substance. So with that, I see councilmember Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. Yes, I was listening to our public comments and so thank you, Mayor Protam, for clarifying because as, as the gentlemen were speaking, I was trying to find where these newly proposed changes, revisions to Title 17 were occurring. So if, Mr. City Attorney, could you just clarify what we are specifically doing this evening? It is just related to the positions that we've been discussing and not any new regulations or changing? And those indeed may or may not be happening before the harbor commission and ultimately come back again to the city council.
Right. I, I think the, the Mayor Protam O'Neil did a good job of summarizing exactly kind of what's happening tonight. It primarily relates to the change from harbor, harbor master from a harbor resources manager. So most of the changes tonight are absolutely non-substantive. There were a couple of changes to kind of clarify a few items where there may have been a little bit of ambiguity, but this is all going back to, Title 17 is all going to go back to the harbor commission and they're going to weigh in on, on a host of different changes to the entire Title 17. And that'll be part of a public forum and that'll be noticed and you'll have an opportunity to comment at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I even do a trivia? Does anyone remember the first, who, who the first harbor master was for the city of Newport Beach? Joe Beek? There you go. All the way back with the Beek family. Mr. Avery.
Just, I think the harbor commission's got a excellent working relationship with the Newport Mooring Association, which I think all three gentlemen are affiliated with. And I think the commission is best suited to really deal with these things because they're so involved with the harbor. Most of them are boaters and understand the issues you bring up. So I have full confidence that once the harbor commission hears from you and hears from all the constituents, takes the time it's needed to really figure this out, because I, I agree, those things sound a little onerous. So we just need to make sure that, you know, that it's done properly. And I know the harbor commission is fully, will be fully engaged on this under the leadership of Paul Blank and the other commissioners. They're all about listening to your concerns and I think they've demonstrated that over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, do we have a motion?
Move. Approval of the amending titles one 17 related to harbor department.
Second.
Does that also include the resolution? So basically, staff recommendations?
Yes, yes.
And that, that's how you understood it, Mr. Hurdman? All right. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I will read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2018-17, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, amending Newport Beach municipal code titles one and 17 related to the harbor department. The motion carries unanimously four zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number six. On item number six, it's the stand-up paddleboard safety flyer item. Both Ms. Dixon and Mr. Hurdman stated that they would like a, this to be polled. Would either of you like a staff report?
And just briefly, I asked Count Amir Duffield to come back out just to announce his conflicts. I don't think he got a chance to do it himself earlier.
Okay.
Thank you. Out of abundance of caution, I rent boats and the paddleboards are rented, so I didn't want to make any confusion, make it clear. And I have a business interest in that, so thank you.
Thank you. And we'll wait just a moment.
I do not wish a staff report, no.
Ms. Dixon?
I just want to make a comment.
Sounds good.
I was going to make a comment. I, I do not wish a staff report. What I would, the reason why I wanted to pull this is I felt that the staff report perhaps was creating confusion. And I, I think, first of all, that it's, it, this matter of the stand-up paddleboards has been understudied by the harbor commission and they've been doing a fabulous job in taking, working with the retailers and working with the users. And it's really a fine line how we want to communicate safety in the harbor for human-powered vessels. What I was confused about, as an example, was, I guess, that the, our leashes, that all rental SUP boards and manual, manual powered vessels be fitted with leashes and that providers of such rental vessels encourage their customers to wear them. Okay. Great, it's obviously for safety. But on the proposed brochure, which is a little educational awareness opportunity, item number three, "Wear your leash at all times if available." That sounded like it's a little wobbly there. Is it, are we going to require it or not? I, I just think we should be clear in terms of how we're trying to create safe conditions on our harbor. So that's the reason I've pulled it.
I think our, the, the opinion of the harbor commission, if I'm correct, is that we wanted to encourage you to wear leashes, however, we were not requiring them. So if you have a leash, we are, we are encouraging you to wear it. So we could certainly reword that, so it's a little.
Yeah, that's all. It was a little oxymoron-ish for me.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman.
Okay, I just wanted to very quickly recognize and thank the subcommittee that did some extensive work on this. From the staff report, they were out interviewing sup renters, sup users, and did a great deal of research in terms of coming up with the standards for the use of stand-up paddleboards in our, in our bay. So good work. Paul, will you please convey that message to them? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I also wanted to say thank you to the harbor commission. This is, this is an item that can sometimes inflame some passion, so I appreciate the work on this. And then I had clarified this with Mr. Blank after reading this, but I just wanted to clarify this also on, on the record, that the intention of this is to be able to send these pamphlets into our, the businesses that rent. It's, the goal isn't to mass produce these and then have them handed out to everyone. It's really just, hey, here's information for our renters and, because I know that, I know that there's, there's a little bit of, there's, there's occasional interpretations and evolution on the law dealing with the, the issue of the whistle and the, and the life jacket. So I just wanted to make sure the city wasn't going too far out on limb, but if, if that's the case, then I can understand that. Ms. Dixon?
Yes, well, thank you. Just one other further clarification is, are we approving it or is it going back to the harbor commission? Or?
You would approve this. We're asking your approval on this.
Okay. Because I did remember, I recall reading in the staff report that there's going to be some form of attestation, that the renter needs to attest that they know how to swim. Is that correct? That's right. It's item number 4B, that each operator acknowledge in writing with each customer that they can swim. If not, they require. So there is a signed attestation. I think this is important for safety, obviously, and, I'm sorry?
So if I, if I understand it correctly, is, do you mind if I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because my understanding of that particular item would be that it was a recommendation that it come back to council as part of a marine activities permit requirement. So that, if I recall our, the way we handle maps, that would, that'd be an ordinance change.
That's later.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I was confused.
Got it, okay.
That was just a recommendate, that was their original recommendation and that the top four were their original recommendation of the harbor commission. And then after the May 8 study session, based on your, your comments at the study session is, is the four bullet points beneath is what, what we would do.
Well, then that's the third bullet point there. I guess that's where I also saw it again. So I wasn't certain if that's still required.
But that would be with, when we revise the material.
The activities permit, yes.
Not now.
Great. Well, anyway, my commendation to the harbor commission for taking this on and, and the extensive research they've done, and I appreciate that very much, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, any others? Mr. Hurd, yes, Mr. Hurdman.
I'll move that the stand-up paddleboard safety flyer be approved.
I second.
With, hold on just a second, with a little bit of wordsmithing on the use of leash.
I second.
Okay. When you say wordsmithing, the, you, could you explain that only because it, there's, I think there is a, without, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this. The, as I understand the leash issue, there's no legal requirement to have a leash and so would you, would, would it be almost like you'd add a number six saying?
I was just trying to accommodate Councilwoman Dixon's concern about the use of a leash. You had a suggestion, Carol, and.
We could certainly just say, "Wear your leash."
It's not required.
It's not a requirement.
Recommend? We recommend wearing your leash?
At all times if available?
No, take all that out.
Oh, so it'd just be recommend, "Wear your leash."
Yeah.
If it's there, wear it. Isn't that what, Diane, isn't that what you're trying?
I just thought it was a little obtuse, the way it was written.
I think that we can, okay, I understand that. That's close enough. I can, any other questions? All right, we'll go out to public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam and councilmembers. My name is Matt Holder. I am a resident of Newport Coast and I'm also the executive director of the nonprofit organization Free Sub SoCal. I'll address the brochure described in item six, but first I want to provide a little bit of background information. Free Sub SoCal was formed in 2014 by stand-up paddlers to fend off regulatory overreach by the United States Coast Guard. As of today, we're recognized as the only organization in the country that exclusively represents the interest of stand-up paddlers. We have no interest in representing manufacturing, racing, retail, rental, or other business interests. We are made up entirely of recreational paddlers. The mission of Free Sub SoCal traces its roots to 2008 United States Coast Guard determination letter that deemed paddleboards to be a vessel. The Coast Guard from time to time issues these determination letters and has used the misapplied logic to also determine that float tubes are a vessel. It is important to point out that paddleboards are not a vessel based on a full process of creating a federal regulation. In fact, none of the procedures in developing a CFR were followed. There was not a fiscal analysis done, nor was there a public hearing on the issue. In 2017, I worked with the National Boating Safety Advisory Council, which is a 21-member presidential-appointed body that advises the Coast Guard on boating safety issues. We produced and passed a resolution to recommend the Coast Guard recognize that leash wear as an equivalent to carriage of a life jacket on a paddleboard. The result would be that a paddleboarder would either wear a leash or have the life jacket on the board to be in compliance with the observed regulation. This was a major shift in the advisory council position and was based on data that I provided to the council that shows that leash wear is a better deterrent to fatality incidents than life jacket wear. This summer, I met with harbor master Dennis Sturigan in his office to discuss sup issues. He was generous with his time and sharing of information. I think both he and I learned a lot during our time together and I appreciate a meeting with me. The brochure proposed is an educational tool for rental shops. And although Free Sub SoCal only advocates the position of paddlers and not for industry or rental, we have a heightened awareness whenever regulatory processes impact sup activities. As we learned in dealing with federal agencies, there is regulatory creep that it can impact our personal freedoms. While I think this brochure is a good idea, I challenge the focus of this brochure on paddleboards. National recreational boating statistics over the past several years shows alarming fatality incidents with canoes and kayaks. Since 2014, there's been a total of 35 fatalities related to sup activities. In the same time period, there's been 250 canoe fatalities and an astounding 312 kayak fatalities. If the focus of the brochure is to save lives, there should be a focus on the water activities like kayaking that are most likely to produce a fatal incident. However, as a Newport Beach resident and observer of harbor issues, I believe the issue surrounding sup activities is more about the shared waterway between sup and powerboats. In this regard, I think the brochure slightly misses the mark. The brochure should give attention to four. attention to four basic concepts to keep sup and boaters more safe. I just got about 30 more seconds, if you don't mind if I can...
Okay, go ahead.
One, know how to swim. Two, stay at the right side of the channel. Three, with a group, cross the channel together, not strung out like ducks. Four, start your journey into the wind and finish with the wind. In conclusion, I want to give encouragement to continue to use the voluntary educational efforts by the City of Newport Beach to have sup remain the safest recreational water activity. In my experience in dealing with the federal government, I observe that overregulation by government is unnecessary and represents an infringement on our personal liberties. Regulations should always be process-driven, problems should be determined by verifiable data, and solutions should be presented with data-driven expectations. Thank you for your time. If I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. I noticed that when I was asking Mr. Hurdman a question earlier, I asked, I mentioned adding a six, but you were actually referencing, fixing the three. So, do you, does staff have enough direction on the, on the motion before we vote?
Yes, and if, if we would, we'd recommend on number three, "Wear your leash if available." I think that clears that.
Is that okay, Mr. Hurdman?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
All right, and we're gonna now have public comment on non-agenda items. Would anyone like to come up, please, and speak on non-agenda items?
I'm the current resident and owner of two houses in Newport Heights. I'm here tonight to alert my fellow Newport Beach residents to the existence of improper and scandalous practices of a well-known commercial business in our community area. Hopefully, I will assist my fellow Newport Beach family in avoiding being victimized as well. This company's business practices have devalued my property, and therefore potentially my neighbors, as well as potentially numerous fellow local residents who have considered, sought to, or put their properties up for rent or sale. It has been over one full calendar year that my house has been torn apart to the point that the city inspectors cannot and should not approve due to the improper second installation of windows and patio doors that was unsupervised. The stress and high-level anxiety over this prolonged period of time has affected my health to the point of hospitalization, plus, and most importantly, prohibiting me from allowing family and friends, both personal and professional, visits and access for all holidays. Olds in my drywall and tiles in the kitchen, bathroom, and master bathroom, second floor patio cracked in half by the improper second installation, demolition areas in the garage, drywall and lighting, et cetera, are just some examples of this company's outrageous lack of professionalism that continues to prohibit completion. Cycle application has been delayed since the inception of the project, to say the least. Newport Beach should not get allowed to be a target. As requested by several Newport Beach residents at my first talk there, this is an update on the, my family's continued applying victimization since I signed my contract in January 7th of 2017. February 27, 2018, eight men with varied administrative titles, at my request, my request, sat around my dining room table, said, "You have to trust us. We will get the situation resolved." Third window installation rectified window jams not ordered or okayed by the homeowner to be replaced by window casings. This was done in April of 2018. This further weakened the window opening to the point that the kitchen window has to be power-drilled to fit, and therefore broken, dismantled, the Mexican tiles, original to the home for over 20, 30 years, pardon me, 30 years. They have refused to even rectify the window openings damage. They have said in writing that the homeowner should have to get a bid for the second floor patio deck, and they would reimburse me. Their deck door has not been attached properly, or door openings damaged, or door opens that were damaged fixed. The wind and weather set off my, my security alarm to date. So it is, we always have my occupants, my neighbors, et cetera, on a continual basis. Off the record, somebody did not want to lose their job. I was made aware of the fact that, that this organization sent one of their administrative, over to Newport Beach Building Inspector's office, and loudly and aggressively demanded that my homeowner's permit that had been paid for, initiated by this company's contract, and my contract may be changed because the homeowner was going to be, file a civil lawsuit. I'm retired and have been clear all along, civil lawsuits is not something I afford to do, or that would do, start to do. Permit is due to expire, just a few seconds if I can get that. The permit is due to expire on November 4, 2018. It to be, it has to be received and paid for by this company. This has always been a contract, been done in the past.
Ma'am, can you wrap, can you wrap it up? How much longer?
I will, sir. The refusal by this company to rectify their audacious damages to date exposes all Newport Beach residents to be potential targets. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your interest, time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Duffield. Honorable council members, my name is Ryan Reza Farsai, and I'm here to inform you of a pay-per-view event on October 18 at 3:00 PM at the Santa Ana Courthouse at 700 Civic Center, Department C22. Ryan Reza Farsai, the student of Dr. Rocky Tarantolo, the nobody, will take on the homeowners association, the management company, and the board of directors. Yes, I'm an Irvine boy. My family moved to Irvine when I was 11. I attended University Park Elementary, Rancho San Joaquin, University High School. I got my undergrad at University of Southern California. I'm a Trojan. I also got my master's at University of Phoenix. I'm here to talk to you about our democracy that is under attack, and the design flaws of our government. Lawyers and Democrats, billionaires and Republicans. I'm here to steal some quotes from President John F. Kennedy's speech on September 1963 at the National University. His speech was on peace. "We are working to right the wrongs of our own country. We must have a badge of responsibility in this modern world that is a willingness to seek peaceful solutions. We must respect the rights of others and to respect the laws of this land. It is my opinion that my constitutional rights, civil rights, and property rights have been broken by city staff, city council, at the City of Mission Viejo for years. I have been pursuing peaceful solution. Their attorney said two years ago that I should go file a quiet title action with a smile on his face. I'm a nobody. I only get three minutes of the public talk to present my position. Peace in the community does not mean you have to love your neighbor, but that they live in tolerance, submitting their disputes to a just and peaceful settlement. Peace and freedom walk together. But in many of our cities like Mission Viejo, peace is not secure because freedom is not complete. Democracy is under attack, and this nobody is told left and right that you should go and hire an attorney. This is a civil matter. Let me tell you something. If the authority responsible is not adequate, then it is the responsibility of the citizens to make it adequate, the design flaws of the United States government, in my opinion. California courts of law, and especially the family courts of law, are skewed systems of delay, delay, extend, extend. Number two, the leak in the room is the attorney, per my experiences, in other cities and HOAs I've lived in. They work for their own pocketbooks, and they're not a city employee, they're not an HOA employee. They advise and guide the city staff and city council and board of directors to steal from their neighbors business property rights. They create conflict, and they capitalize on it. Billionaires, kings of Europe, banks, stock market, that's the Republican Party. Lawyers, judges, courtrooms, state of Israel, king of Spain, that's the Democratic Party. These are two groups that have been gone at extremes in the last few years to split up America. Their conduct is slowly killing democracy. Now, it is my opinion that we are also destroying the middle class in America. America needs a solid third option, an option that is neutral between these two. I also have one more comment. My daughter plays soccer at this Newport Beach, at the Grant Highland Park. The hygiene is very important to me. There's no paper towels or a hand dryer in the bathroom. If the city staff could look into that, that'd be great. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mr. Mayor, and honorable council members. God bless America.
Thank you.
I have some paperwork for the city clerk.
Next speaker, please.
In 2015, Mr. Duffield sought direction from the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding what he could or could not do as a city councilman with regard to the harbor. One out of every three boats in Newport Harbor, more than 3,000, are manufactured by Duffy Electrical Boat Company, of which Mr. Duffield is the sole owner. The FPPC sent him an 11-page letter delineating what he would consider to be a conflict of interest, given that his business is intimately tied with the harbor. Fast forward to 2018, Mr. Duffield and others are interested in creating a harbor department. Mr. Duffield himself acknowledged a, quote, "business and source of income" conflict when he publicly recused himself from discuss, the discussion of the harbor department. In other words, Duffy knew that he couldn't take part at all in the development of a harbor department, and that it would be illegal to even be in the room when the harbor department was being considered. Last week, campaign door hangers appeared across Newport Beach, asking for Mr. Duffield to be reelected in part because, and I quote, "Duffy has created a harbor department to finally give it the attention it deserves." These flyers were also clearly marked as coming from Mr. Duffield's reelection campaign, thus approved directly by him. So which is it, Mr. Duffield? You have either broken the law and created a harbor department, or you are making demonstrably inaccurate statements to your constituents because you follow the law and were not involved in the development of the harbor department. In either situation, you have compromised your integrity yet again, and given us one more example of why you should not be reelected and should not be representing us on the Newport Beach City Council. Add to this your vote to add 3,700 extra pages to the museum house referendum petition, as well as your shameful efforts to force the retirement of our wonderful city manager, Dave Kiff. And I would hope that anybody watching it tonight will understand why so many of us believe that it is time to restore integrity and ethics to the Newport Beach City Council and replace you in November's election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Pat Rolphas, and I'm here to speak again about the Newport Aquatic Center and some of the activities. Last time, I know Mayor Duffield wasn't here, so I'll just do a quick recap about the hidden microphone that was found in the classroom of the, of the Newport Aquatic Center. The police came down and identified it, and identified it, hooked up, connected to the executive director's computer, and nothing was done on this felony charge. So I'm still hoping that, I haven't heard yet from anyone, but I'm still hoping that, you know, the city council's gonna look into that. It's certainly a felony. Alcohol's Anonymous is held there. We deal with kids down there. It's a huge issue. Excuse me. Today, I'm here to talk about, as the light has been shone down at the NAC, and a lot of the corruption that are happening, I don't know if anyone read the last article in the Orange County Register on Sunday, but you're finding more and more information that is coming out. And, and obviously, tonight, for, since I'm limited on time, I'm gonna stay focused on something that's really concerning to all of us citizens here in Newport Beach. So I have the lease here from the Newport Aquatic Center. I'm just gonna read a passage in here, number four, consideration. "The consideration of this agreement shall be the construction of the aquatic center by leasing at no cost to the lessor, which is the city. The continued maintenance and operation of this facility for the term of the lease at no cost to the lessor." So, my question here, and I know I can't ask that question, but I have documents here that I'll pass off, but in November, excuse me, October 21, 2014, the City of Newport Beach gave the Newport Aquatic Center $25,000 to go into a bathroom remodel for its members, not the public, its members. So it's a total violation of the lease. It is, you know, a total conflict of the city to be, you know, doing something for private members into this organization, and I'd like to see if we can get the money back to the city. It's incorrect. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, council members, Denise Obermann. I'm here to talk about something specifically, not, not only to this council, but in contemplation of the fact that we've got an election coming up shortly. There's always been a strong mantra going on at the city, espousing the value and the need to fully support, quote, "property rights." I'm here to talk to you about the erosion of our zoning scheme and our residential development permitting and controls process that is completely run amok. I'm just gonna give you a few examples. Don't have a lot of time with three minutes. So, development and construction begins, houses are allowed, that are really, the footprint of the houses is too big for the lot, too big for the lot. The city, starting at the front end, does not adequately monitor, per its own ordinance, the property corners of property. So there are encroachments and taking of property that's going on. There are numerous disputes that's going on in many communities. On the Peninsula, Lido, Babo Island, Crona del Mar, Newport Heights, we have evidence in all of those areas. So, that is one thing. We've got to maintain the integrity of our lots. Setbacks, adequate setbacks are extremely important. They, they are codified, but the codification in our ordinances has really become contaminated, and it's unclear. I talked to four city staff members, and not a one of them recites the same thing as far as what the setback requirements are. Adequate setbacks are of critical importance for fire and safety, for ingress egress, for things that involve the peaceful and the full use of the home. They involve the preservation of adequate light and air that is important fundamentally to the quality of living and also to health. And the setbacks have been violated in a perpetual basis in every residential neighborhood in this city. Needs to stop. There's been height slop. It's been, I've heard some of the council members talk in some of the forums that are going around about the fact that the reason there's been height slop, and that the elevations that are allowed perpetually cropped up, they've cropped up in the name of the coastal commission requiring a certain mean elevation. I'm here to tell you that the application of that is bogus. You can go to one lot, and you can visibly see that's at the same base. It's 10 feet high, and you go to another one, and the development has been permitted, and it's, it's at what appears to be a pure ground. And there's essentially the same geological and site conditions in that given block. There's something seriously wrong. And what's happening with that, is we're supposed to have a certain height limitation for mean elevation, but there's a slippery slope on what mean elevation really is. I'm happy to take you around. Okay, one last thing. There is, there is a lack of public notice that's going on. I know there's some ordinances under consideration. The public notices and the postings for development are frequently completely nonexistent, or they don't contain the required content. And by the time, residents have no way to exercise public process or their rights to be aware of development and to weigh in on it and its impact. I've got a longer list, but I'll tend to it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Morning, you guys. You're turning into Costa Mesa. That sounds like Costa Mesa to me. That's exactly what's going on in Costa Mesa. So, I would like to say tonight that on August 5, in the Daily Pilot, there was an initial list of campaign contributions. So I don't mean to be a one-trick pony, but I'm up here again talking about dark, dirty, sober living money. So, Mr. Duffield, you're, you're taking money from Mobileite Cell Phone. Mobileite Cell Phone is owned by Gary Jabara, who's the owner of Villa Real Estate. And also, Mr. Piattar is taking money from Gary Jabara. So, I just want everyone to know that this is practically sober living money. They've made a fortune off of it. They sell homes to people from other countries, basically mostly China, India, and England, the British Isles. And then Tim Carr comes in, that he's the other partner in Villa, and he is the property manager. And he, they lease it out to sober living operators. I'm telling you people, this is cash cow money wrecking our, our coastal area. I'd also like to say, I've got a Harley Rooted T-shirt up on here tonight, because there's a, if you love your coastline, be a... a—if you love your coastline, be aware that Mr. Rohrbacher just signed a bill so we can have offshore drilling. And then, three days later, he took a huge campaign contribution from Chevron Oil. So if you care about the coastal area—which I know many of us do—I’m begging you to please vote for Harley Ruda because he is a moderate. He used to be a Republican. He kind of went crazy like I have. I can’t just check the box anymore. And please vote for Cotty Petry Norris.
Excuse me?
She’s also an environmental person.
You’re not supposed to be campaigning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Yeah, we can tell. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and I have a comment that I intended to present to you at your 5:30 closed session, but since that closed session was not held, I wanted to add to this comment that when the council becomes aware that they’re not going to be holding a meeting, you might want to direct the clerk to let the public know, as well as you, that the meeting is not happening. This is the comment that I intended to make. Good ideas often need to be repeated before they catch on, so I’d like to repeat what I think is the good idea of the city publicly posting an ongoing list of the litigation that’s involved in, much like the Community Development Department maintains a publicly viewable list of the ongoing planning and building activity. As an example of the problem we have, on your agenda this afternoon, you once again had an announcement of what was planned to be a closed session conference about the initiation of litigation, but with no indication of what that might be about. And this was the ninth time this year that there has been such an announcement on the agenda. And out of those, only one of those has an outcome I’m aware of, where we heard that you unanimously agreed to enter what appeared to be a separate lawsuit protesting the Needle Exchange Program, which, had I known you were going to be discussing that, I would have commented, “Sounds wasteful to me,” since there’s so many other agencies already having their own lawsuit about that. And to be sure, there was an announcement back in March—I think it was March—that about a four-to-three vote where you had initiated some kind of litigation. I still don’t know what that is about. And I would suspect that what the public sees—or does not see on the closed session agenda—is just the tip of the iceberg of all the litigation the city is involved in, since the League of Cities Handbook about city attorney conduct—which our attorney is a co-author of—says that in many circumstances, it’s actually improper and unethical for the city attorney to ask the council whether a particular problem should be prosecuted because that gives it a political color that it should not have. So I would guess that the city starts many lawsuits that are not seen at the council meetings, and then on top of that, there are, what I assume, many claims made against the city, each of which our charter used to require be publicly reported here, but no longer are. Knowing about all this legal activity is important for the public to understand what is going on with our city, but nearly all of it, at the present time, is hidden from public view. I would again suggest that a city interested in transparency could attempt to correct this situation by posting an ongoing list of the claims and suits that the city is involved in, who authorized our involvement in those lawsuits, and what each case’s current status is, including the final resolution and the cost to the city—if there was one. The city attorney works for you, and you might consider giving him the resources to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Bring it back. So now, we’re going to talk about committee activities, but we are going to do this new program. Mr. Harp?
Yes, so probably best just go ahead and have everyone give their oral reports on committee activities, and then take public comments on all of them at once.
All right.
My recommendation.
Are there any reports on committee activities up here? Seeing none. Go out to the public.
Well, there’s nothing actually to comment on, since there were no reports.
Well, I actually want to comment on the absentee’s report. I want to remind the city council that in years past, there were more reports on committee activities, because that is how council members inform each other of what happens. And particularly important are the meetings that you go to. They’re not held at the city. I remember that Councilwoman Leslie Dagel frequently regaled the public with commentary on what happened at the mosquito vector control board that she was on. We sometimes heard reports about what happened at the transit authority. We have appointees to those. I don’t know how they’re communicating what they do to you, because in the segment about council reports, we don’t hear reports from them, except on very, very rare occasion. I would think they should be routinely reported here so that you’re informed about those other activities. Thank you.
Well, now, we need to vote.
I don’t know what you should be voting on, so I think just move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mr. Yar. I did forget to mention that there was a Water Quality and Tidelines Committee meeting this month, as there is every month. And Brad is the chair, and I’m the vice chair, which I say every time I report on this. And we have a very active committee. We’re concentrating on goals this year, just like the Harbor Commission is, in accomplishing those goals. So, thank you.
Now, do we need to vote?
No, there’s no need to vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Our current business is item seven, amending the Newport Municipal Code Title 17 to the speed limits. And because it involves a change to the municipal code Title 17, the FPPC has said that I must recuse myself.
Okay. And that’s based on business interests and source of income.
Take a moment. All right. Does anyone request a staff report? All right. Seeing none, we’ll go out to the public. Is there any public comment on this item?
Mayor Protam O’Neil and remaining members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. This item has to do with the change in the municipal code about harbor speed limits. And it is, again, amending Title 17, the harbor code, like the previous item three that you discussed earlier today. There was a staff report that has a red line of the changes that were proposed. I pointed out in writing that on page 7-9 of the staff report, amending Section 1765.010, the ordinance you were going to adopt reenacted the words “in two places harbor resources manager.” Since receiving those comments, somebody went back and presented an amended copy of this, which is presumably trying to remove that. It’s really simple. I mean, on your staff report, page 7-9, you have the word “harbor resources manager in two places.” The intent was to replace that with the word “public works director.” I believe that’s what they wanted to do. The amended version in the lobby is signed by somebody from the city attorney’s office. There’s initials. I cannot decipher what the initials mean. One has to wonder if whoever looked at this actually read it, because it’s even more goofed up than it was before. If you look at page three of five of the amended ordinance that you are being asked to introduce on first reading, look at the bottom of page three of five, Section 1765.010, Authorization. It has a Paragraph A, the word “harbor resources manager” has been replaced by “public works director” and/or “harbor master.” That’s followed by a Section B, which refers again to the harbor master. That’s repeating the previous section. It should be deleted. It’s not supposed to be there. You go to the top of the next page, in two different places, it still—it has, again, two provisions that copy each other. C and D are the same provision, except with different wording, and in two places, it continues to refer to the manager. If you look at D on page four of five, it refers again to the harbor resources manager. And if you look at C, it refers to the manager’s administration of the code. Somebody really didn’t carefully do the very easy job of removing the word or phrase “harbor resources manager in two places” and replacing it with “public works director.” I can’t, in the three minutes, explain to you how to correct this, and I don’t think the language is ready for introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Seeing none, we’ll bring it back. Mr. Avery.
Beyond just some concerns with the previous comments, I only notice in this—and I just want to make the comment—I have no problem with it—that the intention of this is for vessels—racing vessels—to—which they’ve been doing for years, they’ve been exceeding the speed limit when they’re doing races in the harbor, when the winds are fairly strong. And just exceeding them by a small amount, like three miles an hour, something like that, would be about the most they would exceed the speed limit. And so this, to me, is to just take care of that problem where, you know, they’re obviously not in compliance with the harbor speed. Also, the rowing programs have the same issue. When a rowing eight, an eight-person shell is going at full pant, it’s going eight or nine knots. And so this allows that to occur, so they will no longer be in violation of the posted speed limit. And it also applies to the coach launches. So most rowing shells will have a coach launch going alongside it, and it’s also going to be moving at approximately the same speed as the rowing shell. So that allows the coach launches to do that. And quite often, sailing vessels have coach boats as well. They’re not nearly as common as the rowing vessels, but the same would apply to them, would give them the ability to legally go faster than the posted speed limit, as long as there’s a permit by the harbor master, and as long as they’re engaged in the activity of coaching these events that are permitted. Then there’s another thing that I’ve seen happen on the harbor, is where the coach launches will go beyond the speed limit when they’re getting to a vessel that is not undergoing any practice. They’re just a good distance away, maybe half a mile, and they might speed. And I had some discussion with some of the harbor commissioners about this, and it’s really not an issue, I think, in the sense that, once we’re up and running, once the harbor master and his employees have the authority to operate under Title 17 in the manner in which we all hope they will be able to, they’ll be able to take care of these little wrinkles in this. But the most important thing is that people operate vessels within the laws and rules of the harbor, and so this enables them to do that, carry on the activities that have been going on in this harbor for the last 40 years at least, in the rowing and sailing arenas. And, of course, the overriding rule, and it states it here quite clearly, which is one of the key rules of operating a boat or anything, really, is that every operator has responsibility to drive at a safe speed. And that’s an overarching one, so I think this is well-thought-out. And it started a long time ago on the Harbor Commission with Commissioner Doug West, who I would like to recognize all his work. It was not—this has been a long road, and it’s good to see it here tonight, and hopefully it can be thoroughly vetted in terms of language. But the intent here, and what it’s trying to do here, is going to solve not necessarily an issue, but something that we need to do in terms of giving special consideration for these unique events that bring really one of the things that makes Newport Harbor special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Mr. Hurdman.
Just a couple of questions, quick ones. I noticed in the staff report, it says that the city contacted the state of California for review and comment on this subject, and that we have not heard anything back from them. And then the same thing is true with the State Parks Division of Boating and Waterways. They must be consulted also. So the city sent a letter to the State Division of Boating and Waterways, and to date, no comments have been received back. Are those comments required, or is it by virtue of the fact that maybe they’ve had 30 days to respond, and they haven’t, that we’re okay to go ahead on this?
My understanding of the code is that they have to submit written responses to us, or we get to implement our proposed changes.
Within a certain amount of time?
Within 30 days. They have to respond within 30 days, per the code.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Actually, I’m going to ask to make one modification to the ordinance under Section 4, 1765.010, the authorization portion. Subpart B should be deleted, as well as Subpart C. And then, Subpart D should be revised to say, “A member of the Harbor Commission, acting in their official capacity, may call for review to the Harbor Commission decisions resulting from the public works director or harbor master’s administration of this code. The purpose of the call for review is to bring the matter in front of the entire body for review.” I apologize for that. Somehow, some of the old sections got duplicated again, and so there was just too much there. So with those modifications, we’d recommend moving forward.
Okay. I’ll move staff recommendation with that amendment.
Second.
All right. Seeing no further comment, let’s vote.
Prior to announcing the vote, I’ll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2018-18, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach, amending the Newport Beach Municipal Code Title 17 pertaining to vessel speed limits. The motion carries unanimously 4-0.
Now, we’ll move to item eight, Appointments to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals.
For this item, there are three applicants. Council would just need to determine which applicant will serve the term that will expire June 30th, 2019, then the other two will serve the terms that expire in 2022.
So—
And that can be done by motion, but you can take public comments also.
Okay. Does anyone—
Yeah, I’ll go. I’ll note that two of the three members are architects. I took liberty of actually going through and making sure—I ran a quick search to make sure they were properly licensed with the state of California. I mention this so that folks will remember, when someone is representing themselves as an architect, make sure you check to see if they’re licensed, because if they are not, it’s a potential misdemeanor for them to do so. But I like the fact that we’ve got two folks who are architects applying, and so I would move that Bill Caskey and John Walls be the—serve the longer terms with—let’s see, make sure I get his name correctly—Robert Alke be on the board, but serving it the shorter term.
I’ll second.
All right. Are there any other comments, please? Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just cannot see on one of the applications—I think it is Mr. Caskey’s—the stamp of the time received is obscured by the letterhead address. Could you just give me the date that this application was received, please? I can’t see the year.
June 12th, 2018.
All right. Well, I guess, just for purposes of chronological order, Mr. Caskey submitted his application first. I just wonder if that makes any difference to anyone in terms of giving him the benefit of serving in the long—he reached out to serve in June prior— of serving in the long, he reached out to serve in June prior to the other two candidates.
So just to clarify the motion, Mr. Caskey is one of the two that I would suggest I've moved to be in the longer term.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Jeff? Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments up here, go out to the public on this item. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Is there a motion?
There was.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, there was.
Thank you. Let's vote.
The motion carried unanimously 5-0. And that might have been July 2018. Because it was submitted June 18th.
But before September.
Correct, before September.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Great. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.